Let me do the order.
15 supervisors are present. Supervisors Brady, Gens, Felsky, Thomas, Stocker, Nedweski, Nordigan, and Carroll are excused.
Okay, we're going to start right on with the presentation of the classification and compensation study. Patrick Flynn will be presenting that. Mr. Flynn?
Thank you.
Good evening. We very much appreciate you all gathering this evening to give us, and more specifically, our consultant, an opportunity to present to you the results and recommendations of our classification and compensation study. With the passing of the 2022 budget, there was funding included to cover the cost of a classification and compensation study. We kicked that off 13 months ago in February of 2022. Patrick Flynn of Carlson Detman was assigned as the lead consultant on the project. We anticipated it would take six months. At the time, Carlson Detman was slammed with requests from other public and private entities to do the same. Our optimism in getting the project accomplished in 2022 quickly faded as the usual hurdles impair progress, including staffing challenges, illness, and a delay in getting outside data. Toward the end of 2022, we had a pretty good idea of our need to better position ourselves in the market. Therefore, we recommended, and this body approved, a 3% upward adjustment to our wage schedule and a 1% market adjustment. Today, we currently stand at only five vacancies for correctional officers. We also reclassified certain positions such as CNAs, and today we stand at nine CNA vacancies. So those steps helped considerably. But we need to keep those situations stable and stay on top of this very competitive market as it continues to evolve. We've heard time and time again that there simply aren't enough workers to fill all the jobs. In addition, we compete with two major metropolitan areas with both public and private sector, and we are competing in what continues to be a hotbed of economic development. Our consultant will walk you through the study, the process, the market, and under his consultation and expertise, the recommendations that administration is putting forward to ensure that Kenosha County will be able to provide quality staff and thereby quality services to the people of Kenosha County. This presentation is intended to be informational. There will be some time at the end if you have questions for the consultant. If there are questions you have for administration, we encourage you to make note of them and send them to me, Patty Orbarna. The implementation plan will go before Finance and Administration Committee on April 13. You have copies of the presentation before you. So with that, let me introduce our consultant, Patrick Flynn. Patrick has nearly 30 years of professional human resources, labor employer relations, and consulting experience. For about the last decade, he has been with Carlson Detman with a specialty in classification and compensation. He is a former county HR director, past president of the Wisconsin Public Employers Labor Relations Association, and a past member of the Board of Directors of the National Public Employers Labor Relations Association. Patrick is well-known in the state of Wisconsin HR world, having worked with many county and municipal entities. Patrick will be leaving Carlson Detman on April 7. His associate Jenna Billwell is here as well. Jenna is also assigned to our account and will be available at the upcoming meetings. With that, I'm going to hand it over to Patrick.
Usually, I don't need a microphone. You'll tell me if I need one or if I'm not speaking into it, right? So thank you, especially thank you for juggling your calendars after I dropped a bomb on there about a week, week and a half ago and thanks to family to put this meeting together. This is a long time coming. I think in terms of where we're headed, we're headed in the right direction, and hopefully it will serve the county well in the future. As I work through these projects, and so how we'll start tonight and jump off is kind of having just a brief overview of the process, but then also talking a little bit about what's going on in the labor market. There's a lot of things going on, have been a lot of things. And I know that those who are at the, I know I presented the budget hearing, they'll be a little bit excited that kind of aligns with they've also been updated as we have kind of watched the market unfold before, are very honest. So as we talk about process, we talk about where we've been and where we might want to go with this, is, you know, starting the process of the orientation, the job documentation, every job, we received a job description for every job, then we were able to then make some assessments, collecting market data and going through that market data to make certain that it aligns with the Kenosha labor market and comparable pool that we established early in the process. Every job, we'll talk about this in a little bit of detail in terms of the job evaluation process. We then had the opportunity to meet with your departments. And we also had the opportunity to come down and work with the human resources business partners and walk through our job evaluations, not to the point where they're experts in the system, but to know what we're looking for, the types of things that might be necessary to query departments about as they had questions relating to position, positioning those positions in the overall wage structure. And then as we wound down the process and met with the committee initially, as you were putting together your budget, you know, there was another round of department input solicited, or their input in terms of feelings. That's probably the best way to describe it, with feelings, because that's really the emotion that comes out of this is how I feel about either I'm paid or how somebody else is paid. And had to make some fine-tuning adjustments, which is absolutely part for the course and the work that we do, to make certain that it's not only reflective of your marketplace, but it's also reflective of your internal hierarchy. And that's, you know, the challenge that we find a lot of these processes. And so as we sit here, hopefully preparing the county for jumping up and adopting the plan as recommended. But we're certainly in a labor market with its challenges. I don't think there's any question about that. And then ongoing debate or discussion in terms of what's happening moving forward in the labor market. If you can tell me, let me know. We've got some investment opportunities here that we can probably take advantage of, because it's been anything but stable. A number of these slides I have tonight are intended to leave behind slides. This is one of those. You can read the words yourself, I don't think I can read them for you. But one of the things that we track in these processes are the job openings, the voluntary quits versus the layoffs and discharges. It's an important metric for us to track, primarily because it tells us how hot the labor market is. You know, do you have more employees leaving their job voluntarily than are being laid off? And when we started tracking this, I want to say it was 2013, 2014, it was an alarming number. 2013, 2014 is now here, we were concerned. That number's grown. The more people who have the comfort level, you know, we've heard the term the great resignation, quiet quitting, whatever you want to call it, you know, with all sorts of those things going on, employees before, not so much during, it's been immediately after the initial wave of the pandemic, it's been an employees market. I don't think I'm saying anything that you haven't heard over the course of the last, you know, couple of years. The layoffs, unemployment rate especially, you know, is also at a, I would say historically low level. The last couple of months, we've seen some regression back towards normal, but there's a lot of movement that still needs to occur before we even get to pre-pandemic levels, let alone back where it was back in 2013, 2014. And all predictions, in fact, you know, just kind of following through in terms of Fortune Magazine, just had an article in the last week or so. Search hard enough to find it without a paywall. I'm thinking that, yeah, there as well, that's talking about for the next five years, employers can reasonably expect to see some competition in a labor market. I would argue it probably will be a little bit longer than that. I think as we see the baby boomers continue to exit the workforce, the following generations not having the same numbers to backfill, I think this is a long-term issue that we're going to have to grapple with. I think that's why we're seeing a lot of moving towards advancements in technology and whatnot. But this is a place of pressure on the wage schedule. This next slide is simply the Wisconsin view of the same data, a little bit more erratic. Wisconsin was late to the party in terms of the labor market challenges, but after the pandemic, we saw that gap grow. And so again, Wisconsin's experiencing the same thing, and we track this for the, all the upper Midwest states that we need to. The other metric, and one you probably hear about on a month after month basis, especially over the course of the last couple of years, is the consumer pricing index. You know, that's a metric, it's not the metric, but it is a metric that we track and we follow when it comes to waging increases. And the main reason why we track it is because that's what employees see and hear in the media. There's other data, there's other points, I'll talk about one of those in just a moment. But the other reason is because this is the one that has a very real effect on your own ability to budget. That as wages go up, CPI also can increase, but road salt, asphalt, paper, paper, you name it, everything else is increasing and places tremendous pressure. And I think as I lamented back in, in October, November, the same holds true now, that back when it was at this level back in the 1980s, the solution was, well, CPI is at 8%, maybe we would raise taxes by 8%. It's not a recommendation, but that was a legitimate conversation that could at least be held in this room. With the changes to the levy limit legislation, you know, back in the late or mid 90s and maybe the 2000s, when it was made permanent, that's no longer not, yeah, that's not a logical statement, it's just the reality of what you're dealing with is inflation increases, you're not able to increase revenues to those standards. Just places a challenge before you. And so in case, if we're looking at your red dotted line is if you just take the weird numbers out of the mix, the almost 24% back in the early 1900s or some of these other extreme values, if you take the extreme values out, CPI runs about 3% per year. And so that red dotted line is just there to kind of illustrate the historical average with the outliers removed. And so you can, again, you can see the challenge that we're faced just with the current times. The employment cost index is probably a more accurate measure of movement of wages in the marketplace. And again, as a leave behind, I'll let you dig into this a little bit more if you want in terms of the actual narrative. I'll speak to the picture. And prior to the last major recession back in 2007, '08, the public sector, not by a lot, but eclipsed the private sector in terms of wage increases quarter by quarter for quite a while. After that time, the private sector has eclipsed the public sector. Not a competition, but one month or one quarter, two quarters, three quarters with private sector eclipsed in the public sector, that's a workable. When you have it consistently timed at the time of the time, you can see that growth between the private sector and public sector begin to grow, and you can see the effect of that, especially the last couple of months where the public sector has had to dump a proportion amount of money into their wage schedules to keep pace with the movement that's occurred in the private sector. So again, lots of wage movement, these are national numbers, but we see the same numbers pretty much holding true in the public sector in Wisconsin as well. So there's a lot of pressure, this is being placed on wages before we even dig into this. In terms of our approach and how we view things, how we handle this process, when we talk about our practice and the areas that we try to touch on, our total rewards framework, our Workhouse Indemnity Consulting, our parent company is Cunningham and Butler Insurance Services, that we talk about total rewards when we look through the lens of compensation, benefits, and the employee experience. It's a model similar to what you see in other sectors, role of work is a very similar model when other organizations do as well. The primary focus of what we are looking at through this process is compensation, base wages. It doesn't mean that benefits aren't important, they're incredibly important, and we'll talk a little bit about those. It's also, you know, the employee experience, you know, how employees are connected to the organization, the level of engagement, the culture, performance management, talent development processes, also deeply important. In some cases, it's the best investment you can make when budget times are weak, in terms of trying to work on a new workplace culture. But again, our focus is almost exclusively on the base weight portion of this total reward puzzle. So for us to dig into this, we had to learn a little bit about you, and what are your pay practices, what are your jobs, what are your jobs structured? Because although every single county is under the same set of laws, more or less in terms of how it operates, every single county structures itself differently. So it keeps our job interesting, is that we think we know a registered beats office, we think we know a highway department, until we walk into an organization and they tell us we don't. And we have, you know, learn a lot of those nuances from scratch. Also, getting down to the nitty-gritty as it relates to pay strategy, pay philosophy, how do you want to pay? How competitive do you want to be? How competitive do you need to be? And then ultimately finding a way to implement and execute, and at some point, hopefully a little ways down the road, but at some point, begin monitoring and planning for the next updated risk structure. Because unfortunately, this is not a set it and forget it type of process, it's something that does have to be revisited every so often to keep you competitive in the marketplace. And in getting us there, we're always talking about the four questions. There's many other questions that come up, but the four main questions, who are you going to compare to? And that was a very deliberate conversation that we had at the front end, I'll talk about that, but talking about each one of these, we can do a little bit more detail. Where do you want to be in that marketplace? And that one used to be kind of an autopilot conversation up to about 18 to 24 months ago. We'll talk about why that is. How do you want to pay your employees? And one of the things is, you know, one, how do you want to pay them? And two, do you need to change your methodology from what you're doing now? Some nuances to it, but again, I think we're going to stay pretty constant in terms of approach. Then ultimately, where the rubber hits the road and where your work truly begins is how do you implement? How do you afford what's being recommended if you agree to what's being recommended? So just kind of lay the foundation in terms of what we look at and how we approach it. It starts for us with job evaluation. One, it lays a solid foundation as it relates to looking at jobs through a consistent set of criteria that is non-biased, meets all the legal requirements, and is consistent through all of the projects that we do, whether it's public or private or not for profit. So other organizations have a similar tool, or many other organizations do, ours is a, is a point factor job evaluation considered by name capital. Again, I'm going to grab it just here, I'm going to speak to the next slide, because that's some actual work and scripts in about there. Is that every single job we have, so if we've got 250 jobs, 250 times we ask the same level of questions, what are the problems and challenges that we're giving to the employees to resolve on our regular on-site basis? How compromised are they? And then in resolving those problems, how deep in terms of thought and thinking and creativity and innovation has to be exercised to get to the bottom of those problems? Once we know the problems, let me ask, what decisions are we asking that classification to make? And that's a multi-tier one as well, like how much freedom are we giving that individual classification to make decisions independently? Some not so much, and some there's a great deal of autonomy that they have in making decisions. What portion of the organization do they have the authority to make decisions? Can they make decisions in their job? That's the default. Do they have departmental decision-making? Do they influence and impact and affect the decisions of multiple departments? Or do they have a span of control that expands across the entire organization? And then the third layer that we ask is, what is the level of participation in that decision-making process? Ancestry, I'm either a very passive participant, or just a bystander in the decision-making process, or even offering me only information. I'm making suggestions, I'm expected to make suggestions, I get a vote on participating, or I have the final decision-making in my department or my role. What we find in the public sector is that very few jobs have final decision-making authority. There's a committee, there's a commission, there's a board, there's an executive, there's somebody who gets to have final say in a lot of those roles. We do have some of those, but again, in terms of that. And then, and I say not the final, but the final big, the one that requires, I'd say more detail or depth of thought, is what are the interactions and communications that classification has to engage in on a regular basis? And so from our standpoint, what is the context, you know, in terms of insight, is it very limited in scope, or is it more expansive? And what's the impact of the flow of information or data in the organization? And then the last two are the more traditional, easy to identify, what's it working around? What are the types of things that can hurt you? And what are the physical requirements for the job? And then the last one, knowing all of the above, what's the intellectual horsepower that we need to fill that job? Education and experience. And so when we get to the end, and this is not your data, but when we get to the end, recount a grid over many lines deep for your jobs, it looks like a whole bunch of alphabet and number soup. Those letters and numbers mean something to us as it relates to the individual ratings applied to each classification. And the far right is really where our work begins, and that is the point totals. And once we have the point totals, we are then able to group those jobs together so we can say, from points 400 to 449, this is a grid. From 450 to 549, this is another grid. So we group those jobs together, and that's how we begin to build the organizational hierarchy. One of the things that, as we're going through each and every one of these jobs, and I would say that whether it's job descriptions or job description questionnaires, our hands are probably on them no fewer than five times, and oftentimes up to 10 times, as we're digging into the market, as we're digging into, hey, can we look at this job and compare it to others and what have you, is that we begin to make an impression of, yeah, I think I can match that job to the marketplace. Those become our benchmark jobs. Jobs that we know are going to be consistent across organizations, across the various surveys that we either purchase or we conduct ourselves. We want to make certain the data is valid and reliable, and we can see the appropriate levels. Some jobs, the job is a job is a job. Chief Deputy Sher, Human Resource Director, that is a job. And then you also might have accountant, you might have entry accountant, intermediate accountant, senior level accountant. And so being able to level those jobs and find those jobs in the survey as well, because you indeed have the levels yourself within your organization. So having a number of 10 chart jobs is important. But what's also important to know is that not every job in the organization needs to be a benchmark. Our goal is to have a sufficient representation of jobs at the top, the middle, and the bottom of the organization, that we can begin to build a model for you that is best representative of the marketplace and the types of jobs that you employ. Again, another leave behind slide, too small for me to speak to anyways, even this close, I couldn't read it, I wanted to. But it's just, these are the listing of benchmark jobs that are used for your organization. And so once we get there, and we start looking at data, we start looking at wages, then we have to start talking about why our jobs paid differently from one another, from our job evaluation standpoint. And there's any number of reasons why it's perfectly acceptable that somebody get paid differently in the same classification, in the same department or what have you, whether it's market or education, job evaluation score, what have you. But those are all legal valid reasons. The things that we do not take accounts, nor have we ever taken into account, are the big three models, race, age, or sex. Those are prohibited by law and simply don't enter into any of our background in any way, shape, or form. Once we have those jobs evaluated and someone has preliminary analysis done, then we kind of navigate to the marketplace. This is, you know, a conversation that we have at the front end of the process, and we have it at the front end because we need to know where to collect our data. So as we look at this, there's two marketplaces that kind of compete with or not to compete. Sometimes they're one in the same, but who are you comparing yourself? Who is likely? That's usually the metric. And a lot of times, you know, the first, you know, is who have you historically aligned yourself with? Sometimes there's roots in fact of argument, that you might have had a pool that you aligned with because that's what had always been done in that situation. I think it's oftentimes we hear Kenosha and Racine mentioned in the same breath, we need to compare them, or who else is likely from that standpoint? But also, who's competing with? And the reason why those are two different marketplaces that sometimes align with one or another, is because who you're competing with could be very much smaller than you or very much larger than Milwaukee County, for example. That five times, it's five, six times, math is hard at this late stage in the day, but the reality is, they're significantly larger, but they're also legitimately competitive in your, in your region. And so as we look at this, we put together a comparable pool, knowing that we had a very solid representation of southeast and eastern Wisconsin. I think that's an important piece, given the ease of access to, to road systems. We also threw a couple of other counties in there, at least for the sake of looking at it in terms of across, of their, and Marifon Counties, in addition to the Brown, Abogey, where they go, Fallinalec, Shroygan, kind of a cut off, I would say. Some people say Shroygan's southeast Wisconsin, some say it's Lake Shore, I say it's both, but the point is, we've got a very solid, robust set of comparable employers, and we have a very robust set of market data that we use that wasn't just for the home. That's one of the things I think we not only find necessary, but we pride ourselves on having a robust set of surveys that not only provide jobs for the various levels and the jobs you might have in the organization, but also provide regionalized or localized data on the management system. Being able to get to the Kenosha marketplace, especially for a community of your size, is important to us. So having pay factors and comp data and ERI, and being able to use those to get to what the Kenosha numbers are for various positions is very helpful. It's just not realistic to have every comparable or every survey source used for every job. Some jobs don't exist in the private sector. Some jobs only exist in the private sector, and you just happen to have those within your organization. The other part is that we look, we clean our data for statistical outliers. We've got a $40 an hour job, and we have one of the employers reporting $80 an hour, probably an outlier that we're not going to include that is so far out any reasonable statistical method. Same thing with data that's below, if we have a $40 an hour job and somebody's paying $20 an hour, it's probably not a valid data point that we use. That's again, where we believe we earn our money to make certain, we're giving you the best set of data possible building these recommendations. And not very often, but sometimes, I'll use an example, it has no application here, that we might be working with a county where they have a county forest. And we have to go and add five or six other counties to make certain that we're getting a, we've got the data for other organizations of similar size, that we might sometimes reach out to make certain that we're getting a job that should be obvious, we should have matches that just doesn't exist in the pool of selective. Those are very few and far between. That then takes us to the point of our first level of analysis in terms of, what does the market look like? And again, all of those, that one graph or that one on the table, as I could, because it's all your benchmark jobs, each one of those benchmark jobs that was on that list is a red dot in this graph. And so for us, and I'm going to start using some terminology here as we kind of work our way forward. Again, as a leave behind, the last three pages of your presentation are terminology. So I might start throwing out R squared, the pay line, all those sorts of things. And as you're looking at this after the fact, that is in the terminology section, so you can refer to that. But our first, just from an eyeball perspective, is as points go up, so the bottom axis, our point values that we've determined, our observation of both jobs, our observation as assisted by your departments and by the job documentation, by the human resources staff as they come back to meet with them, but as we develop and fine-tune our job evaluation ratings, this is our observation in comparison with the Y axis, the chart data. And so when we plot those two things together, visually, without even putting a line through that, there seems to be a pretty decent relationship between those two numbers. We put the line of best fit through there, and we'll talk about that in just a moment in terms of what that means for us. We can see that there is a very good relationship. So the first metric that we use, and do we have something, we can start making recommendations to you, is our sort of coefficient of determination, if you want to get to the fancy name for it. Really is how much of the variance in the data is explained by our model versus explained from any number of other reasons, error, someone choosing to pay extremely high, extremely low, whatever it might be. Sitting at ninety-six percent confidence with that number is an incredibly good starting point. We like to see ninety. We want to start making new recommendations. With eighty-five, we'd have some degree of comfort. We started getting ninety-five and above, we're just being greedy in terms of trying to push it for more. And just the data line that it is way, so we'll take it. We'll revisit this type of graph in a few moments here. But when I start talking about that model we've got, again, what contributes to that? The job evaluation scores, what surveys did we use, what costs? You know, we want a Kenosha cut, we want a public sector cut of that data because the survey reports different levels, as well as, you know, as we work our way through and have a management. This is where I kind of take a quick pause. It's impossible to have these conversations about pay. And even though our exclusive focus in this process is pay, you gotta talk about benefits. And what role do they get? Because they're equally important conversations. That you cannot have a conversation about pay without having a conversation about benefits. However, they are parallel conversations. And here, I'll give you my theory of the world, I think it's right. I've been wrong before. And that is, pay is what gets people in the door. When you advertise a job, this is what they're looking at to say, do I want to come work, do I want to leave my current employment and come to work for Kenosha? The benefits conversation, in my experience as an HR director and even as a consultant, is the benefits conversation occurs after the first interview. Maybe after an offer of employment is made. Maybe on the first day of employment, they haven't paid attention to you. But the benefits aren't the, is not necessarily the things that are driving people in the door. That's not categorically true, but I think it's mostly true. The benefits arguably are what keeps people in their job. I can't leave because of my health insurance costs. I can't leave because of my vacation balance, my sick leave balance, whatever it might be. The benefits are, maybe they're not golden candles, but they're at least nickel candles, you can admit in the air. And so what you're faced with as an organization, because ultimately, this rolls up into the same budget, is that you have two equally bad choices. You can reslice the pie, say, well, we're gonna pay more in wages, so we're gonna cut benefits. Right now, it's probably not a great idea, just given the state of the labor market. That's an option. Just even increasing wages and holding benefits flat is going to reslice the pie. The other one is make the pie bigger. That decision's been made for you in many respects. Unless you've got a revenue stream, which I'm aware. And so the choices that you're left with are, are like, equally bad, it's a fuzzy lock. But I think some of these others, and this is one I feel a little bit, it took some time to reflect on this, because I get asked this question a lot, what about the public versus the private sector? Are the benefits in the public sector superior to the private sector? I don't know how to use the term superior anymore. Are they better? I think almost always, I think the answer is yes. There's been a lot of things that have occurred over the course of the last decade or so. They have rebalanced that. I think that's not a political statement, it's just simply the fact of that since Act Ten, you know, the pension going from fully employer-paid to fifty percent employer-paid was a dramatic shift. And in many cases, can serve as a barrier for employment for some positions. And I'll use the classification of a nursing assistant at a nursing home. I've got a competing offer with a private sector home, twenty dollars an hour, twenty dollars an hour. It's made the wages exactly the same. That I go for the private homes, we've got a 401K plan, a four percent employer challenge. So if you choose to invest up to four percent, I go for a matching pay. Typical, I'd not be four percent, I'd be three, my five. But standard private sector offering, I get a choice to that. That same employee that I want to take a job with Kenosha County, that it's going to be six point eight percent, change? Let's just say six point eight percent for the sake of argument. And you don't get a choice from it. And if you don't stay in public sector, that money is gone. You do not pass, and that money goes back into the pool. Again, that's a different layer of conversation. But the challenge in what we're dealing with here is that the unintended consequences of a decision, I think, is otherwise on the public sector. We've seen, you know, as times change, the private sector is much easier to adapt in responsible situations, both positively and negatively. If the bottom line is, and we've seen that a lot in Wall Street or the tech sector right now, that as ties have changed, we can respond a lot more quickly. I'm just gonna skip through some of these, but if I look at, one of the things that we often get asked about, it's not included in our analysis, primarily because not every survey we use has this data point, but this notion of total cash. When we get a survey, I'll use a Teller's Watson or a comp data survey, and if I'm assessing a job, I might say, this is a fifty thousand dollar a year job. And there's another data point off to the right that says, but it's also eligible cap people across the board for about a fifteen hundred, two thousand dollar a year bonus. That's a total cash number. We're looking at base wages, not the incentives, but those exist and those are data points that are relied upon. And in many cases, begin to road that difference in competition between the public and private sectors. We were talking about the pension plan. You know, you don't have a choice about the budget in many situations, it has to play a role. This is as much money as we have. And this is only the amount that we're going to spend. And so I think that there are some difficulties there. The point is that as much as we want to compare, and we need to, don't mean anything that I just said in the last few minutes, we still need to try to make those comparisons and make those connections where we can, because you are competing for the same talent. And you need to be able to communicate the possible advantages of public sector employment. These next few slides here, I want to talk about market competitiveness, and I'm gonna talk about it from a couple of different angles, because I believe it tells a different story. And so, and I'll explain why in this moment here. But this first one, we are looking at the midpoint competitiveness of job value. So if I look here, say we, I'm gonna use a fake number, we have ninety-nine benchmark jobs. We have more than that, we have ninety-nine benchmark jobs. T-one is the first thirty-three, the lowest paid thirty-three of those benchmark jobs. The middle, thirty-three, the top thirty-three. So when we see these T-one, T-two, T-three, that that's what it's meant to represent. So based on actual employee pay. At the midpoint, with the actual money paid to employees, that first grouping of employees is about six and a half percent behind the market, about three point seven percent in the middle tier, and about two point eight percent behind the market at your top tier. Same data is represented by this graph, it just doesn't tell as good of a story that I'd like it to. But two lines on top of each other, relatively good average market index, about four point two percent behind market. Not terrible. However, because your prior, your existing plan has some basis in the market, and you did a study in the mid-two thousand, two thousand and ten, that it was based in market. So if we compare, do the same analysis, but instead of looking at actual employee pay, we look at the midpoints, the flip flops, that the bottom portion of your structure is eight percent, you have about ninety percent in the middle, and you're about ten percent, almost eleven percent behind at the top of your organization. And that's illustrated by this graph. And you're about nine point three percent behind in market by that. So what does that tell us? I think it tells us, especially as we've had a chance to converse and work with the county in terms of its practices and how it handles these things, is that the movement through the structure has been used in lieu of adjusting the structure to keep employees on page with the marketplace. Not a bad thing, it's just that's, data kind of proved that out pretty quickly. And so as we look at this, and one of the things that we urge you to consider in your decisions in future years, is that having a blend of structural adjustments in addition to employment movement through the structure, and I'll illustrate that a little later on as well. That's one of the things that kind of jumped out at us in terms of, as we're trying to figure out your current situation and how you line up with the marketplace. In terms of plan design, there's a lot of things that go into it. Even if we're keeping the plan design constant, things that we want to make certain that we're at least identifying, say, on top of, how do employees move? And again, that's one of those things we'll talk about as we wind down here. How do we build a internal hierarchy? Are there jobs that we need to look at due to compression? Answer is yeah. I mean, that's always it. In terms of subordinate employees and supervisors. Or, you know, in many cases, we didn't have that because the sheriff's supervisory staff are handled a little bit differently here at Kenosha. But if we were doing any other organization, whether it's a city or a county, police, fire, are usually the primary ones where we have to look at compression between those who are supervisors and those who are being supervised. Do you have any unique market pressures? Answer is yes, you can move on to that one. The answer is, as far as said in our introductory remarks, you know, you're in one of more dynamic labor markets in the state, and I would say probably the west with that interplay between the Chicago and Kenosha. Milwaukee to the north as well. Number of desired structures, financial budget pressures, performance, all of those elements have to be taken into consideration or taken into consideration as we navigated through this process. Then the fun part. And all, and some of this information will be delivered by not, as I said, kind of given raw costs. But some of the things that need to be taken into consideration, we've talked about this a million times already this evening, is budget. Level limits, expenditure strength, whatever you want to call it, or however it applies to the individual organization. Budget is and will always be a factor in those decisions. It's unavoidable. And in terms of arriving at recommendations for implementation, the challenge is trying to find that balance between fairness and happiness. If your goal is to make everybody happy, you'll be talking about this plan well into the foreseeable future. It just is not one of those things that is easily controlled. You can look at it, say, we've been fair. We've looked at how much we have to spend, and how do we allocate that in the most fair and efficient manner possible, knowing full well that happiness is an elusive target, but again, try to do right by not only your employees, but also your constituents and your taxpayers. Two challenges that will always wrestle me against, in different types, like a step plan, this is much more pronounced, and a performance plan, it's still there, but it's a little bit different. But that is, what is the size of that increase? Upon implementation, I think many employees, especially in this labor market, many employees' expectations for wage growth upon implementation is fairly high. CPI is at eight percent. Employment Cost Index at five percent. Where's my eight percent, where's my five percent? The first thing is, you've taken some intermediary steps. With your January first implementation, you adjusted the structure by three percent. You granted one percent movement to all employees. You reconfigured other positions to get them more closely aligned with the market. And so you've already done some of this work, but the size of the increase is a legitimate conversation. The other one is, what do I like the service? I've been here twenty-five years, I'm an adequate performer, why aren't I at the top of the pay plan? Or I've been here ten years, this employee's been here five, why aren't I measurably ahead of the individual employee? And there's a million and one reasons why that might not be the case. But one of them always does come back to logic. We'll talk about that a little bit in terms of the ability to do this counterbalance against the available ones. So in our work, you know, one of the things that was incumbent upon us, with this project and every other project, was to help develop some options. What are some different ways of implementing the structure that allows you to utilize as much of your funds in as equitable a batch as possible? So looking at, you know, minimum percentages or some other metric relating to ten. And I'll show one example that I know the county is recommending in just a moment here. But again, is that balancing and is out. And even though it's not a direct flow, I think it's an important thing to consider is that we get through this process, and you ultimately have the final say, not only where things land, but what happens when someone says, well, that's great that the consultant recommended this. I have a different idea, and I'm gonna ask you to add to that idea. It's your right, as board members, you possess that right to make those changes. I just need to make the caution of, it's a very slippery slope. That if somebody makes a compelling argument one month, and somebody comes in the following month and makes the same argument, equally compelling, you better be prepared for that one to be accepted as well, after that, after that, after that. It can turn, and I have seen it turn into this landslide of classification requests independent of this process. Sometimes it's necessary. Sometimes it just turns into a process, and again, it's never ending. A lot of words up here. I apologize for, I think the messaging, I think, is important for a final delivery. But I do need to impress upon in terms of future plan administration, that balancing act of the structural adjustments. So if I've got a pay plan, whether it's twenty grades or ten grades or one grade, that the market continues to move year after year after year. CPI, or whatever, you know, we conducted an annual survey across the Midwest, you know, asking employers, what are you planning for next year for your wage increases? Structural and budget adjustments. But some version of that, the market continues to move. And if the structure doesn't move, the plan gets out of line with the marketplace a little bit. We've got some clients, I know one of the proposed approaches, and I think it's unreasonable, is to say, you know what, given our budgetary limitations, it's really difficult to keep up with the Joneses each and every year. What if we kept pace, you know, look at it on a biannual basis, every other year, to at least make certain that we weren't losing sight of where the market is moving, and we make those adjustments as necessary? My point is, as long as you're doing it on a fairly regular basis, every other year being included in that, it needs to be at least contemplated. Still needs to weigh in with the rest of the budgetary conversations, but the market continues to move. Employee movement through the ranges allows you to create some differentiation between less tenured employees and long-term employees. Low, shouldn't say low performing, because no, you should have low performing employees, but employees who are meeting expectations versus employees who are substantially exceeding expectations. There should be greater wage growth for those individuals. And so if you look at that, having both of those things working in concert with one another are the recipe for a well-functioning compensation structure. Get expensive at times, it can be difficult to manage, but those are two things that need to be contemplated on an annual or at least a biannual basis. I hinted at this before, in terms of alternative approaches, in terms of landing in the marketplace. And this notion of, in fact, I had a slide in here last October, November, and I took it over tonight. But most organizations, and I'm gonna say probably right around ninety percent, if I remember the last World of Work survey, have historically tried to build their pitch structures around the median marketplace, the fifty percent tile. And that was a strategy that worked really well for years, if not decades. And then all sort of, so in the last couple of years, we've seen organizations decrease, the number of organizations participating or building structures around the fifty percentile shrunk. And those who are building above the fifty percentile have grown. And in some cases, were very good. And so I want to talk about this in terms of our recommended approach. First of all, in a very competitive economy, data in general, whether it's CPI, employment cost index, you name it, are backwards-looking numbers. What happened in the last month, what happened in the last quarter, what happened in the last year? We're always looking backwards to kind of figure out what that data is today. Same holds true with wage data, public sector and private sector. As we went through this initial analysis, you know, one of the things that we looked at was, well, in the public sector, we were collecting data last summer for pay plan decisions that were made prior October, November, as part of budget conversations. And so the conversations occurred in terms of what are we going to adjust our wage structure? At the same time, we knew that the overwhelming majority of your comparable organizations were actively engaged in wage studies of their own. So we got that working against us. In the private sector, and we, I would say, we probably have an equally robust business in the private sector than we do in the public sector, that we've seen jobs, even in this area, whether it's across the state or across the nation, that have grown from twelve, thirteen, fourteen dollars an hour to nineteen, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two dollars an hour in a very short period of time. So we know there's rapid wage movement. And that wage, those wages haven't necessarily found their way into the surveys just yet. A lot of organizations, I've got a pay structure, and it's this wide, I'm gonna start paying in this portion of the wage structure. It's not affecting, you know, if I report to a survey in terms of what my midpoint might be or some other value. Also, that the data by law has to be slightly older. In the past, the smell test for the Sherman Antitrust Act, the data has to be at least three months old. Usually three to six months when you figure a survey cycle. And by the time that data gets analyzed, sifted, sorted, and published, it's probably six to twelve months old before it ends up on our spreadsheet. In the past, that was perfectly fine. We buy a survey, and it could serve us well for a couple of years. Age of the data, so if the data is two years old, the market's been moving by six percent or three percent per year, age it by six percent, and we're gonna be or three percent per year, age it by six percent, and we're going to be pretty darn close to that market data. Not quite the case in the last couple of years. We've had to advance our survey purchase cycle just to keep pace with the market movement because not only has there been significant market activity in the private sector and the public sector, either significant activity that we knew about, which was easy to account for, or that we knew was going to happen. And that is the bugaboo with this recommendation, is that knowing that a large portion of your comparable organizations, almost immediately upon adoption, were going to, their data was going to change. And, you know, I've done dozens upon dozens of pay structures over the course of the last decade, not one of them has resulted in lower pay. The reason why this work is done is we need to be more competitive to bring employees in. So we knew the market would be moving. We knew that probably moving forward, the surveys, I'm going to say the surveys, not the pay surveys, but the paid practice surveys, I believe at some point we're going to see that the 50th percentile, the median, is going to be the metric that's going to receive most favors again. In the short term, to keep you there, we probably need to do something to kind of get you in an advantageous position. So let me just talk to these lines. That the black line that we see up here on the screen is your current pay lines, your midline, so your current structure. So based on the marketplace that was established in 2014, 15, and as it has advanced over the years, that's your current pay structure lines. That gray line is where the median of the 50th percentile marketplace exists. The green line is the 75th percentile. Want to put your foot on the gas and say, no, we need to compete, and we want to compete right now, we could go to the green line. As an alternative, and our recommended approach, is why don't we look at the blue line as an average of those two numbers, the median, which we know is rock solid, all three of those data points are rock solid, we have that data, we have the tools. But we don't want to get too aggressive. We know that the goal is still to compete in the middle of the marketplace once the dust settles. We just need to buy a little time to let that dust settle. And by moving pay plan to the average of those two numbers, the 50th and the 75th percentile, advances your structure by four, five percent, lets the dust settle for all these other pay plans to get adopted, and the market to shake out. And I would wager that as time progresses, six months, 12 months, you re-measure, I'm not sure if you do, but if you were to re-measure, you're going to be a lot more closely aligned with the median marketplace at that time than adopting at the median market, letting the dust settle, then all of a sudden, now we're behind the market, almost immediately. So that's, it's not a matter of us wanting to spend more money, it's wanting to put you in the position that we believe you intended to be in in the first place. So if I look at this, the graph looks the same, the numbers are slightly different only because this is the 75th percentile on the line instead of 50th. Still above 96% on the R squared. I've highlighted the formula on that graph instead of the R squared, because now we need to start making some pay plan design decisions. So how are we going to do that? So right now, and also in the decade, our recommended wage structures for the exempt employees and the non-exempt employees. That NE 10, if you remember, 30, 68, how do we, so I just want to illustrate to you, how do we arrive at the rate of pay for each of these grades? Because it's not pulling them out of thin air. Because we know, let's go back to your first segment, because we know we've got a model of the marketplace that is representative of the types of jobs you have at the top and the middle of the town of the organization, we've got great confidence. We could then look at it and say, all right, grade 10, goes 479 points to 514 points. The middle value of those two is 496.5. Simple. But now we know the middle value of that, let's plug it into that equation, y equals, 496.5 points means this top here, and that comes 36.8. We can repeat that for every single one of your grades, and it's based off that line on that prior slide, so it's a, it's a good marriage or blend of the, what's a market data and the job evaluation. We've got a plan that is, or should be, externally competitive and internally equitable. That's the ultimate goal in any one of these, is trying to have a plan that meets both of those expectations. So again, not any voodoo or anything like that, pretty straightforward in terms of how that, once we know that a good model is already, how we build these individual structures. One of the other points, and this is just kind of laying the groundwork for one of the future conversations, is how do we address compression? This sort of compression more of the short-term versus long-term employee compression. I think there's a reasonable expectation, unless the new employee's performance and skills and expertise is so far above a long-term employee, there should be some difference in salaries for those positions. Money's not unlimited. I guess that's kind of the underlying theme of all, if you have a guest from my prior statements, is that what's a way that we can at least acknowledge that people have longer tenure with the organization and still fit with the environment? So this example is that if I have less than a year in my current job, then any adjustment to the, to my placement in a new wage structure, there would be no additional adjustment. If I had between one and two years, and then extra half percent. Between two and three, one, I'll weigh it two greater than five years, an extra two and a half percent from an implementation standpoint. So again, you're not moving everywhere to the exact location that it should be in the structure, but other options that were measured. And one of those, and again, it's a term that's identified in the end of the presentation, in the terminology section, is a term called competition. How does my current pay compare to the midpoint of my pay range? If I'm an employee today, and I'm paying at the midpoint, my competition is 100%. So one of the questions we asked ourselves is, what if we maintain an employee's competition? They were at 110%, let's maintain it at 110%. If they were at 80%, 90%, let's maintain it at 90%. That price tag got pretty astronomical pretty quickly. And so, that, at that point, it's like, well, we can't do that, or at least, unless, again, you have a funding source up which we're on a mirror, we can at least try to do something to move employees along that pay structure in accordance with their years of service. So this is one approach that, again, is being brought forward as a possible solution. So as I look at this, as I wind down, thankfully for you, we want to make sure that your pay program is strategically aligned, it's internally equitable and market-friendly. Those three, I think we've hit pretty hard on. You know, supportive of employees, and having a performance-based structure in and of itself, that's the ultimate goal of that. And trying to design an implementation methodology that's still recognizing that. But even with the compensation program, it's so much more than just the individual annual wage increases. You know, with a structure where you've got a job evaluation system that's kind of underpinning it where jobs are placed, if a job, if somebody retires and you shuffle the duties around that department, can we have the job reevaluated for proper placement in the wage structure? That having the compensation program policies that employ performance above and beyond their job role for an extended period of time, are you recognizing in terms of compensation for the long class, or temporary pay adjustment for certain circumstances? There's a lot of things that can be supportive of employees, other than just the individual annual increases. Again, you have to have a total rewards conversation. It is legally solid, affordable, ultimately, you're the final arbiter of that, in terms of what's affordable and what's not. Is it understandable? I hope and pray that something that I said tonight makes sense to the audience. I'd have a few extra questions as we wind right through. As I alluded to before, it's not a set it, forget it type of situation, that every two, three, four years, depending on how hot the marketplace is, and I hope for your sake that you don't have to go every, you know, three, four years, but testing the marketplace, are we still in alignment with that? Every, again, depending on how the plan is maintained, every 10 to 15 years, going through this process, again, I think anybody who does a compensation study upon, you know, it can be destructive to a organization, or asking for a lot of internal work to be done to get to this stage, to get there, but it's something that's necessary. So again, the proper care and the feeling of the pay structure, let's say you can expect about a 10 to 15-year lifespan before you need to kind of blow the dust off things and maybe go back and revisit the job evaluation process. So I've already kind of said something in my prior slide, everything else is based on terminology, so I want to make certain that I didn't give you the proper time to answer the questions of the night, to lead you to a conclusion for pretty much all of this.
All right, at the back of your booklets, just after the terminology, you will find a side-by-side comparison of the current wage schedule and the proposed wage schedule. This shows you where positions will be classified. Then you have a copy of the proposed pay grades. And the next is a summary sheet that covers a few miscellaneous titles, exempt status, and job changes. These came about as we worked through this project with the division and department heads. So those are part of the recommendations we're putting forward. We're proposing that this be implemented on July 2nd of 2023. If approved, at that time, employees would be moved into those proposed pay grades. Anyone not at the new minimum of their pay grade would move to the new minimum. And then anyone within the new pay grade would see that tenure adjustment that Patrick talked about. So up to two and a half percent increase in salary for five years or more in their current position. This plan relies on using our current approach for individual movement within a pay grade, which is 3% of the midpoint annually with successful performance. And then we would recommend a market review of the wage schedule at least every other year to ensure that remains competitive as well. Obviously, this plan has a cost. I'm going to turn it over to Finance Director Patty Merrill and Barna Bench, Budget Director, to talk to you briefly about the cost. Again, more detailed discussion will be had at the Finance and Administration Committee, and then as soon as they're finished, we can open it up to questions for Patrick.
Thank you, Clara. Before we discuss the costs, I wanted to take a minute to talk about hundreds of hours of work that have gone into the plan in the past before you. Hundreds of hours by Patrick and his team, hundreds and hundreds of hours by Clara and her team, and hundreds of hours by Barna Bench and Matt Lees in posting out the different reports that are in there. Thank you to all of you, and thank you for your patience. This plan took a long time. There's a lot to it, as you can tell from Patrick's presentation recently. Many times, people became impatient waiting for these results. Trust me, we struggled while putting together the 2023 budget, not knowing these results. But we were able to glean enough to better position ourselves in the market. And thank you for supporting those preliminary efforts, but this plan shows we have further to go. What you have in front of you is a good plan. Take some time to study it. The side-by-side wage schedules will help you follow the positions from where they are to where they're being proposed to be classified. If your concern is the correction professionals, you can follow them through. If your concern is social workers, you can follow them through. Document your questions. Send them to us ahead of the Finance and Administration Committee meeting on April 13. Give us an opportunity to review your questions. If it requires us to do some work, give us that time to do that work, and you can come forward with those answers at that time. Something that's easily answered, you might be able to answer very quickly. Back in 2015, when the county undertook the classification and compensation study, which resulted in the compensation model that we currently have, I was the payroll manager. I remember the implementation well. Many of you were on the board or were involved in that study, and you probably remember it well, too. We began using this model then, and we continue to do so. It's a good compensation model. But if COVID has taught us anything, it's that nothing is the same as what it was. Post-2015, with each budget year, the county would submit certain positions to be reevaluated. Post-COVID, evaluating a few positions was not what was needed. We needed to do a total refresh, and that's what Patrick and his team did. This plan addresses our needs today and positions us for the future. We need to refresh this periodically, as Patrick and Clara all mentioned, as we move forward to remain competitive. Things are always changing, as evidenced as recently as yesterday's announcement of the potential unemployment in the areas. One of Kenosha's goals has been to be the employer of choice. Post-COVID, we've struggled with high turnover in jobs and overtime, high overtime due to vacancies. This plan puts us back on track towards that goal. As Clara stated earlier, there's a cost to this proposed plan, and I now turn it over to Barna Bench, who was a director, to discuss our recommendations from the local.
Thank you, Patty. As Patty alluded to, my contribution to tonight's presentation is to discuss the budgetary impact of the recommendations brought forward by the administration. So this estimated cost was derived by using modeling, using our current employee data sets. So the mid, with this mid-year implementation cost estimate for 2023's budget would be $750,000. As you may recall, as part of the 2023 approved county budget, there was approval for use of $500,000 of art funding for this implementation. So there's a difference of $250,000. So we're proposing to make up the gap there. Budget modification, increasing revenue line item related to the state allocation for computer rates for $90,000. We received word late in the year of 2022 that our allocation for this year and going forward will be $90,000 or more, that will be budgeted. The balance of $160,000 will be included as part of a proposal for the year-end carryover closeout resolution, which means, in a nutshell, it will reduce the amount that we're expecting that we lapse into the job fund at year-end. Any questions?
Thank you, Barna. We'll now open a floor for a question, and if it's something detailed or requires me costing you any time to do that, but Patrick is the one who won't be here to present in the future, so if you have questions for the county, we'll have to ask.
Anybody have any questions? Supervisor Berra. Patrick, a couple of questions. On your Y equals, how do you derive x?
So the X, if you look here on this middle-hand table, the grade breaks table, so grade one is 250 job evaluation points, 268, the middle value 259, if I go to the very bottom. I look at that, the grouping in yellow, the grade 10, this is using a grade to show as an example. The jobs in grade 10 are of point values 479 to 514. The middle value of those two numbers is 496.5. So that's how we got to X.
Okay, 496.5, plug in the X off here. Okay, so that's a 496.5. What is the... Okay, so what you're saying is on, I think I'm getting confused, on your Y, yeah, right, on your X there, I was equating that to the 04. That's inaccurate. That you have a 846? Any equation? Point 06104? Or is that just an extension?
Just like an extra decimal place?
Is that it?
Welcome to the world of Microsoft Excel. The graphing features use fewer decimal places than the actual formulas used to drive them, and so the, instead of the point 61, it's actually point 6104.
All right, so that's just like 3.14 versus 3.14.
3.14, I can see, right.
Okay, my other question. The years of job compression implementation on 47, is that relative to the percentile one?
That is not, it's not percentile. It is, here's my current pay as an employee. And if I've been in my job greater than five years, the implementation would be... Is it two and a half or is it one percent? An additional two and a half percent.
Okay. So right now, I'm hearing right, that we're looking to increase our wages based on the compression, not based on our, not based on the blend?
Two different conversations. One is the design of the actual structure itself. So a percentile blend, you're using the market data in addition to these formulas to build the individual pay grades. But then you have employees, if I look at grade 10, $27 to $34, $36, you could have an employee anywhere in between those numbers in terms of where their individual rates of pay fall. And so in terms of implementing the new structure, if I've got greater than five years of service, if I'm at $27 and I've got more than five years of service, it'll be $27 times 1.025 to get them to the rate upon, in the new structure where they would fall. So the structure itself is based on that blend you were just talking about. The implementation and the placement of individual employees would be based on this grid.
All right, that's all I have, thank you. Thank you. Supervisor Tucker.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just looking over the non-exempt employees, maybe I'm looking at it or I'm just trying to figure it out. It looks like the proposed wage reclassifications for 2023 is going down from the approved wage schedule for a lot of our non-exempt jobs. Is that correct, or what is the...
If you're looking at the wage schedule, it's important that to know that grade one current is not equivalent to grade one proposed. You need to look at those positions and where they're put, and then look at the values of that pay grade.
Okay, so it's more than just the, okay. All right, thanks for my question, thank you.
Anybody else? Supervisor Derris.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, so we're not going to do another one of these full-fledged studies for 10 or 15 years. It's a major effort. We just did one in 2015, so about eight years lapsed since we did one. So, but it would be really cool if we could get this market line analysis to spit out annually. Is there a way of doing that?
You could, there's a market analyst.
So you've got the market line on 25, and you've got the other market line and the analysis. So every year, we'll update this thing, develop, is there, we can have a computer model and see how we are on the market line as we...
You would have to go through and have the market data applied to each one of your benchmark jobs to be able to see where the market is moving. I mean, if I were to look at, if I were a larger corporation, I'm probably going to have compensation staff on staff, and I'm probably looking at salaries on an annual basis. I mean, so, I mean, there's precedent for doing it. In the public sector, it tends to be, you know, we don't want to spend the money to update this line each and every year.
Yeah, we don't want to do that, but we've got the data, and we know how much we're going to increase them. And we also, somewhere in the universe, we have the market data, right?
The market, the surveys change on an annual basis.
Yes, they do change, but your company has them, right? I mean, generally has them.
Correct.
So we could take that data, and I know it's going to erode as time goes by, but isn't there still some way to, you know, get some semblance of that market chart with some computer modeling without redoing the whole study?
You wouldn't have to redo the whole study. So when we talk about, I think it's a very good distinction, and I'm not saying you can't cite services, but it's services that we offer to our clients. And that is, a full study involves looking at each and every job. That's the most, when we talk about the laborious process, it is, you've got 250 jobs, employees, update your job descriptions, complete job description questionnaires, supervisors, look at them all over, and do that. That piece does not need to be redone every year or even every other year. You will have jobs that will change, that you will want revisited and reviewed, but that part should be relatively constant moving forward. The part that's dynamic are the market, is the market data. And so if we do a market update for our client, that's substantially less in cost to that client to just plug in the newest market data.
That's what I'm talking about. And I'm guessing the effort for that is way less.
Correct.
And I, I would like to consider that. I don't know if that's annually or every three years, but, you know, that is something that I think would be good to know.
We're recommending every other year.
Every year. So we would, that, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman. I just want to confirm, so that's something we'll be doing. We'll have that, we'll have a contract to have that evaluated and reported to the board during, at budget time, is that the plan?
Okay.
Yeah, do we have to include the budget for the upcoming years?
Yeah, I, I don't mean, I think the board would be certainly, at least I'm one member, I would be willing to include money in the budget to have this done every couple of years so that our, the biggest part of our budget is a good budget. But, so you're going to contract for that. We're going to annually do this and have it ready at budget time so we can have our wages updated, and we know that we're at market. Yeah, okay, good, thanks. I yield the floor, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Any other supervisors? Supervisor Derris.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Clara, this is probably for you. Do you know off the top of your head how many job classifications the rate of pay went down after this study came out?
First, I will tell you, no employee's rate of pay will go down as a result of this study. There were very few jobs who basically were stacked. I mean, the pay grade didn't change much, but a few cents. Thank you.
Anybody else? Anybody else? Anybody else? Supervisor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I'd venture to guess that some people's jobs were request by them to another name other than the job they're in now, is that correct?
So that sheet, the summary of changes, at the back, there's, there are a few that were titled "Changes Only." And then there were a couple where we are actually looking to move the employee into a different job. And they're outlined on that sheet.
And to dovetail to Supervisor Derris' earlier query, what type of cost are we dealing with with an every-two-year approach? Coming back at numbers since we're talking numbers tonight, might as well ask the numbers of Solon's party ways, but those don't have numbers, Scott. Great job.
And I, yeah, I'm not, well, I'm about to say I'm not trying to be elusive in my commentary that, one, in terms of the pricing...
I never took it that way.
Okay, but actually, April 7th, I don't have a vote on what that pricing is, first of all.
Well, as of today's date, what would it be?
It will be, I would say, at least a third of your, it would be substantially less than the current project cost. So I'd say probably a third is a good metric to kind of, 30,000, give or take.
Thank you for that, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Anybody else? Anybody else? Anybody else?
Yeah, I guess we have one more question.
Thank you for your presentation, it was great. And I guess we're not going to see you at finance, but feel lucky in your new project. Do we have a motion for adjournment?
Oh.
Supervisor Day, supervisor US, any of the ancient? If you're in favor, you are adjourned.